Field back, blah blah blah, acquaintance and oversight of the Indian agenda. So what, from the second to the third. Uh, we have one for the other. Our vacation, self introduction. Okay, uh, our guest and members of committee. Open remark, our interview. Uh, presentation. As indicated in the letter. Uh, besides the acquaintance formally, this committee have an interest. You know, if somebody is sat there, they will ask me down of the very, uh, entities here present. Like I indicated earlier, when somebody question will even be asking here, will not be question because we think we don't know. But like you said, we are the people there because some of these things are things that they want to know. So here, really from the basis model, we better for them. So we will have, according to this, uh, general public work, take the voice, L P R A, L P R C in local. Is on your presentation, there will be question and answer, period. And the last thing that will be on was our mark. We think that it is, it's, it's important that today we have a relationship, whether. Like I said last time, we made the law, you got secure, then my dear relationship, if through a information, I would think we want to speak earlier to the end of the. For the agenda just read, what is a great pleasure of the wonderful committee?
So for the videos join us, we'd like to say welcome to E O B C. On TV live.
The motion just moved by honorable CEO. All those in favor say yeah. Against M A, as thing which. We now ask a volunteer to, uh, give a one prayer.
So folks, like you say, a pleasant good morning, good evening, good afternoon, this is our location. We are bringing forth this live broadcast from the House of Representatives. So the House of Representatives has voted to summon the National Oil Company of Liberia, Nuka. And the Liberia Betrude and Refining Company, L P R C, for consultation after.
We go there a lot. Uh, I was seeing guys to study.
Official invitation to appear before the House Committee on Carbon Hydrocarbons. So we are.
You don't understand.
The guests, who they are already here, won't sit there. So in a moment, for now, um, this event will kick start. However, if you just join it, kindly share our live broadcast so others can join and know what's happening here.
You can go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Aaron C K C. I'm the Deputy Managing Director for Operations. And the Library of Technology and Finding Company, L P R C. I'm Rufus Scott, Betrude and Geologists, Technical Services, Liberia Betrude and Energy Authority.
Esther Reed, Chief of Order Staff, Head of Administration, L P R A.
My name is I, Emmanuel Tanguzango, Vice President for Finance. And the Guzman Anazal, um, my events.
Paralympic Logan, Parity General, L P R A.
I'm Prince Tambak, Deputy Minister for Technical Services by the Ministry of Public Works and Company of Acting Minister.
Good afternoon, honorable, my name is Fabian Ayedalai, the President and CEO of Nuka.
My name is Emo Stuwe, Managing Director, Library of Betrude and Finding Company.
Honorable Muhammad Nodsi, District General, Muhammad. Jacob, check by the beginning of December, I will tell you about some days.
No, come back in soon.
I will smoke all the more, most representation was written. Now, we were N S M, assist Sydney, this is the full number. I hear it, they say that can't really do that.
My name is Mrs. Soli Pekan, on Bank of Man County, District Number Three, Member of this committee.
Honorable, as a party, this is one trend, but as a country. Honorable Mostahawar, I repeat, District Number Three, Labor County, to a chair. Semi, uh, district team, bombing country, Chairman of this committee, hydrocarb. Alright, thank you. Um, there are here, um, can we to keep the doctor period, uh, the, I'm the Chief Officer, someone else, one of the offices. Who is the president? Can you please leave the table?
So, Chair, no, so, no, the, the reason is, uh, we just want to be clear that we don't have any marketing on the bus. The reason is those who are going to be taking oath are people who will make definite decision of the institution.
As continued in the.
So again, sorry about pointing out, it was, will make a definite decision on behalf of L P R C. Fabio will do, you will do, he will do because he manages the financial management. Uh, C K will do because he manages operations. And so I don't want it to be misunderstood, it is because of making definite decisions.
Thank you, honorable clarity. Um, yeah, that is how it works. And besides that, when you see on this table, we'll always be consulting because we are the people there because. This man is coming from his day, he know his people is telling, I'm coming from the day three, for the good that happened far and I did, but I know what it telling. But then we come this committee, so somebody here, I'm going to say, you don't know people there, he going to say, he is that high common to the five or seven million people that is since us where we are. So yes, thank you for the clarity. Um, at this moment, we will ask the Saudi, uh, um, let me start the.
Thank you, honorable Chair. Thank you, thank you.
Please your right man.
So folks, if you just join us.
Institution.
We'd like to say welcome, we be following, this is the normal routine from the House. Where they get normally taken.
At the testimony, I am about to play.
You know.
Today's, today's hearing.
Getting into the discussions with the lawmakers. However, we, we have the Managing Director for L P R C, he's here. We have the President for Nuka, he's here. We also have. The L P R A, they are here. Just to give you a summary.
This chairman, honorable Chair, members of the committee.
House Carbon Representative.
The way this is idea, I qualify for today's hearing, thank you very much.
National Oil Company of Liberia, Nuka, in Dada T, Liberia Betrude and Refining Company, L P R C, for consent. After both entity failed to honor an official invitation to appear before the House Committee on Hydrocarbon. And the Chairperson currently, um. Head, the committee, so heading the committee now is Honorable Sam Jackson. On the straight, on the county, he's the Chairperson for this committee.
The six constitution, which empowers the House of the Legislature of the Republic to adapt its rules of the.
So kindly leave your comments below, if you join us, kindly leave your comments and share the, the live broadcast, so others can join and know what's unfolding here.
So what that means is legislature will argue. So most of the thing you hear, all that, even when they are coming, they don't know is that guys are trying to work. Yes, views, obedience, statements, etc., express them, reflect the entire fifty day House of Representatives, as the Senate's three presidents will all. And we are encouraging all the girls here to truly ask. That we hear the representative, and why don't we say that what they true also can say, we hear the representative, we say, I believe, because that guy was here. As indicated in the communication sent to you, this is not a dedicated or legislative hearing. Where especially if they come. This hearing is purely for acquaintance, while at the second event, or a statutory oversight of the function. They are here on say, some of the question, or the interaction going on hard there, will not be feeling because you don't know or you don't know. But as if the cameras are pointing out, or people, or they're listening, some of them are going to go, some of the diagrams and things that they hear, or they don't understand, they depend on the country, so we hope you hear what they mean. The next one going to be doing, we're going to be providing for you, they go back to the which you think what. Because, huh? Because one of the thing that I know is, uh. For me, the relationship can be parallel, for example, for me, I don't know, because if we make a law and you are executing, then we might have some kind of a division. And that can only happen in our set of emotions, with the way we want to work. For more, and since the relationship between us will not be parallel of them to the other. We must do the work of the black people on the basis of the laws that are given on the course of all of us, all of the entities that came into vision. Now we here, we have to do more side, that's the reason why I would call it kind of idea. I want to say thank you for coming, we thanks for the opportunity, thank you, bro.
Mr. Chair. I knew you were about to go. I knew you were about to go to your agenda probably, but I need to request something as we start.
Yeah.
To our colleagues from the executive.
He's, um, index name, W C.
As far as my people can say. This committee has become active this time. Uh, because of some things that are coming up in the long run, for the past ten years, there were, uh, been some dominance. But again, we are grateful that we have, uh, an expert when it comes to oil issue. And so, uh, the, the speaker was magnificent enough to make him the Chairperson. And so we have want to be having some back and forth in terms of interaction. We were a little disappointed on, uh, last Friday, let's say.
Friday.
Friday.
Friday, we sure have been well.
When, uh, we came to capital, with the situation of meeting you. And, uh, we met public works and L P R A were present. We think, uh, we want to start from a wood note. Uh, when I share a committee on business, and in the fifth report, when I share the committee on banking, I made it clear that our interaction will not be competition. We need to work together to do that, but when we start from the note, wearing, you are poor. And you don't show up, and you don't even write. Quite says the note to say, I can't come because of X, Y, Z reason. It makes us to feel that those in the executive are thinking like people who say that most of us here, we don't know what we know. And the last one I check, professionally, we are five of them. And so let's start to interact, to be so intent on us progressing, like going post job. And any music, give record of the send, of the, uh, text, and you can't make it. And show the chairman would understand that you can't come, but for us to come here, and you don't show up, just tells us the difference to you, besides the point. We had intended going to the, the, the rough end, by asking you to come on content. We had to reverse that because of the first, uh, time was happening, and we really get preliminary approval. But if this chairman had gone to preliminary ask that you come on content, you will come in, you will understand that that is important. So I'm asking, as only the seniors, uh, on the committee, after, because of telling you. That we, we, we open up lots of relationship, and we need issues to be solved. And you have wrote in, if you can't read the, the, the chairman, or the coach here, or any person in committee, I will relate to him that, uh, I can receive a call from. It was like, I mean, sorry, I'm a bit late. That he can't come, or Fabio gets to be like travels, and then we, we have that, but let's, let's talk about it. General, they should have been very close to the chairman.
Uh, it seems that you are getting in my head, so let me add in the low, shape that I want to do now. Now, is this saying out there that a lot of people thinks that law, that only come to work two times a week? Because they know that they teaching a thousand, but they do not know that we work five days a week. We call Monday, we want to say our committee, teaching a thousand, our section, the Friday, we want to come. Now we sacrifice that on Friday, like I told, he was sitting with me. The entire committee was not happy. But like you said, we look forward to a better relationship, because the thing about it, are you, we not exist with our host. So what it means that everyone have to play their part, so that we not working. So, um, to the agenda, before we go into the agenda, I would want to use this time to allow for our colleagues who are entered to interview themselves. Come again.
We are right, you know.
Now have the agenda.
Yeah.
Do you have any copy of that, by against? Yeah, honorable, you can go, I will introduce.
Yeah, thank you very much for the chair, distinguished colleagues, to our guests, my name is Anton F. Wallace. And Representative of People's Assembly, District Number Two, Mayor of County. In Chair on Banking, Finance, Charity, Member of this committee, thank you.
My name is Priscilla Ihankopa, and I represent the people of District Five, Masurado County. And, um, I'm a member of the Judiciary Committee, and I'm part of, I'm part of the member of this committee.
Good afternoon. My name is Yanki, from our representative, because Mayor of County, like District Two. And the Chair President, on Education, Public Administration, and also the Resource Competition Committee.
Alright, I want to say thanks to our colleague, now let me prepare a statement for the presentation, so that our people who are here. This hearing is not a go to your core, your core, why not? Sometimes I do it like a cliche, but I think in my opinion, just by working, this committee is, is a telecommittee. So for our want to be procedural. We think in our mind, we want to reach our oversight entities first, settle the room back on how we want to work with them, so that after today, if they don't follow suit, then we know that now what they will have. So you're not going to hear the issue of that. And to our colleagues from the other committee, who are part of the joint committee, that was the reason they invited you, so please don't see as they respect. The joint committee was offering us to talk about the oil black issue, today is hydrocarbon. You got mind, even after the, the, the ratification of the oil black and the company start operation, hydrocarbon going to be.
Are you, are you, are you alone now, you going to ratify?
No, I'm saying, we are not here to discuss, I'm saying. No, no, that's what I'm saying, and the reason is because you know, you know how our people carry news. So I don't want people watching to think that that's, so that when they do here, they say, go, they discuss it, so actually, it's for acquaintance to me. And for all to know the entities that are owner, or what are they doing, so that we compare their functioning, what they are knowing, as I created them, and what they for it, thank you very much.
Honorable Chair, let me understand, so this, this, this hearing is for acquaintance.
And. Yeah, so that's what we, we are not discussing today. Alright, thank you. Uh, now, if we should follow suit, we should. But we got other colleagues here, they are not even part of the joint committee, and I'm part of there, yeah, but we are one family, many a time people, because you got a lot of people you want to be talking to, so yeah, we are settling back. So, number five presentation, um, at this point in time, we only allow public work.
But Mr. Chair, we have, we have earlier asked for.
Yeah, I gave you capital, right?
No, we just received.
From public works.
We only receive follow up in our.
Yeah, but so probably, right, but now, L P R C and Nuka, till today, they have, they haven't somewhere anything. And let me use it down to say that I received a call on the book entertainment, uh, sorry that you take me for bringing me back my car. The communication sent to them by the chief clerk, they didn't say anything about that. Uh, so because of that, you can even look at the capital of the communication, so I thought, uh, in a way, some of the community, but now that they are here to do the presentation. Alright. Public works, we look forward to you to do your presentation, but please let me guard the presentation. You know, public work is the big thing, this committee got no interest in the saving and the engineering work. Public work, as the same one, the men who know you be doing, when you doing road construction, you going to be doing piece. The Jimmy Aswar are used, and they are all hydrocarbon product of this edition company. Hydrocarbon, we are concerned about that. So while we are agreeing with this, saying all of them, which I think is good, and that's why we allow colleagues from all the committee here in La Grima, but we appreciate that fifty percent or even more, just focus on that part of it, that is our culture. Some of the, even if you're not there, don't worry about that specific question, the one you answer, you answer, the one you can't answer, we use that, so we are calling valid. But basically, your explanation must center around. Public works for road construction, we want to be patient, you are using Aswar, the junior compound material, this is a hydrocarbon component. So we want to know what we, we had in the way, so thank you very much.
Honorable Members of the House of Representatives on the Committee on Hydrocarbon. Please here for.
So start you soon.
And, uh, colleagues from the Executive Committee, the President. The Ministry of Public Works has, um, I would speculate that all of you know our key functions. Um, we are responsible for, uh, woodwork, uh, body constructions, as of building, in terms of inspection. Uh, we are also responsible for, uh, drainage construction, bridges. Um, and also, uh, since twenty forty-seven. When the Rural Department, uh, Rural, uh, the Department of, uh, Rural Woods was also transferred to the Ministry of Public Works. Uh, we also took on additional responsibilities on coordinating rural development programs, uh, rural housing and washing services. At the Ministry of Public Works, we, we have eleven ministers. Uh, four, of course, a proper minister and three deputy ministers, along with seven assistant ministers. Uh, we cut across three departments, uh, administration, technical services, and rural development. So how public work, uh, in terms of hydrocarbon? Uh, honorable Members, public work will do a lot of, uh, a lot of pavement work, like you mentioned. And to date, we're doing a lot of importation of bootman products. And L P R C is here, they regulate that setup. Uh, we, uh, for this year, um, the importer, as Iris. Have already imported about four thousand eight hundred metric tons of bootman. And, uh, based on our calculation at the ministry, we usually we use about forty, forty-two to forty-five, uh, metric tons. Uh, to pave a kilometers of road. So we use a lot of, a lot of bootman. And with the current agenda that we have for this current administration, to be able to pave, uh, more than four hundred kilometers of, of, of road, primary roads. Uh, we see the need to be able to have, uh, more of this importation. But if we try, if we start to have hydrocarbon that translates into a bootman product. It reduces the cost of how we do roads in Liberia, we're averaging anywhere between eight hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars per kilometer of road. Which suppose that finally of the road that you see, uh, constitutes, uh, for about forty-five percent of the cost of the roadworks. So if, if, um, if the potentials are there, and we start having, uh, hydrocarbon of nitrogen and carbon to translate into, into bootman. Then that is reducing our importation, and also reducing the cost of roadworks in Liberia. And so we look forward, we look forward to that, and, um, Mr. Chair, um. And the sooner we can move ahead with this, and getting to know our potential in this sector, will even help us to start to recalibrate, uh, the cost of roadworks in, in Liberia. And we'll be able to maintain our road faster, because the product will be over here, we don't have to order them, we have a vessel count, and we have to sell to the contractors. If we have it readily available, you will not see buttholes about America, you will see even the gravel roads that will not even be properly engineered. We can, we can use a bootman, just spray the bootman using surface dressing. So this is a huge potential for us, and we, we look forward, uh, we look forward to this, and we continue to, we continue to monitor the development of this, this committee. And leveraging on how our country can benefit on the infrastructure, road infrastructure side, because of the work of this committee. So not to take too much time, we, we send out eight copies of our, uh, what we, what we call, uh, service delivery. That, uh, explain everything that Ministry of Public Works does, and we also give you a summary of, uh, our current activities at the Ministry of Public Works. Uh, so, Honorable Chair, if I miss anything, I'm sure, uh, you have questions, so we can clarify those ones, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, the Minister of Public Works away, and during the first appearance, I came with, uh, uh, also the Deputy Minister for Rural Development is also out, so I came with Assistant Minister, uh, earlier on. But honorable, I think, I don't know, he, he came, we waited for one hour and he left, because we're doing, um, we bring something for wood survey, we're trying to reclassify all of our woods. In Liberia, and know the actual, uh, length of quantities of woods we have, since we've done it, it began about six years ago, so now we want to be able to know. So he's leading on activity, and they're going out of town, so they, they like to go back.
Alright. So honorable colleagues, remember, we come here on hydrocarbon. So let me, let me, let me, let me ask a question to the members of the committee, if you see the agenda, the way this structure. After presentation of the, the right entity, the question and answer, do you want us to do it as soon as the entity presents? Do the question and answer? Huh?
We have meditation, they are the same on having questions.
So the word want to do it, when the first thing we present, we go over to the honorable Members, you that got a question.
They say it will be endless.
Yeah.
So you know how.
So maybe we take maximum, maximum five question, if you take one, it's okay, three, it's not about maximum five. Alright, so with that, come again. We're saying that the maximum question a member can ask is five, you don't want to ask is four, you want to ask through one is four. So now, based on the presentation of public, honorable member. What's your way of pleasure, in terms of?
No, so, uh, this is an exhaustive presentation that covers everything that public work is doing, an overview of your functions. But I, I, I'm more less concerned with. How we tie into the hydrocarbon issue, and its effects on the environment, one. Two, I'm concerned with the costing issue, now government is putting a lot of money into roads. We that, uh, because also comes from SAB, we are so keen on road issues. But also because of the size of our envelope, we are also careful with cost issues. Now, how can we manage our hydrocarbon activities? That will in effect reduce the cost on roads? I, I, I just want to have an idea on what's the, the top process of the ministry.
Uh. The issue of hydrocarbon potential is new for us at Public Works, but we, we're, we're assuming that we can leverage on it to be able to reduce the cost of road per kilometers, which means. Which means with the product, because this hydrocarbon translates into bootman, bootman is made of, of that. So if we have it readily available in Liberia, the cost of importation that is added on the cost because, bootman costs about six hundred ninety dollars per ton. So we're assuming that when, when this, when we start exploring this in Liberia and it's available. It's possible that that cost will be reduced by fifty percent, which means it reduces the cost of roadworks per kilometer. And so when you talk about the environmental side, when I was here the last time, I asked the Chair if EPA was also going to be invited to this as part of the committee. And he mentioned that I think I don't know if I know how to do that. So for us, when we're dealing with this product, we make sure that we have EPA certification. Even the supplier of bootman in the country gets EPA certification. Not only for the supply, but even when they deliver it, the storage, the use of it, EPA has that influence. Because EPA requires the Ministry of Public Works to obtain our construction targets. And within that construction target, there are conditions that deals with the use and of, of this product. So, and I'm sure the, in time, time come, I'm sure this committee will also have EPA as well. But it's a huge potential for us, this will reduce our cost of roadworks by about thirty to forty percent. If we do it right in Liberia and if we can produce the quantity that is required for our roadwork. This will also reduce the timeline in the time that we'll do roadworks. Also, because sometimes we wait for vessels to come and bring the product. But if it's here now in Liberia and we can, we can add some value to it, then it reduces. Because all of these roads we drive, we use sixty, seventy bootman. Even some people that build their houses, who they flat out, they use, they use that liquid and waste it all morning. So you can have leakage, all of that. So the potentials are, are there, not only for roadworks, even for, for structural purposes as well.
So again, I'm, I'm, I'm another person on this committee, I may not be very versed with the, the hydrocarbon as hydrocarbon. But I'm going to be bringing numbers to make sense into the background. As this now, what we have heard for a period is it costs us about a million dollars to do a mile or two, I don't know why that is true. Now. Can, are there alternatives in terms of materials used that will drive us downward? And here you know why I'm asking, because you are, you are about to do a road in my district connecting St Paul's Bridge to Central Bitter. I'm just worried about cost in terms of, do we have alternatives in terms of materials used that will cause or that will drive the cost of doing these roads further downward?
Yes, let me, let me repeat myself on the cost, we're, we're averaging from eight hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars for a flexible pavement. That's what we discussed, I think that's the purpose of this committee, dealing with hydrocarbon and that's flexible pavement, that's core time. We're not disposing rigid pavement, the concrete line, because this has to do with concrete. So here's the alternatives, we have chip seal, which is, it depends on the concentration of the bootman. What we discussed was something about three point four percent of the concentration of the bootman, we have to do with the hydrocarbon. That goes into the mixture of what we call bootman and asphalt pavement that we put on the road. So yes, the, the concentration makes the difference also. So we can reduce the cost, we can reduce the concentration. But we also have other alternative seals, we can take it there and we, we do something called pure print or penetrate to it and then it hardens the soil, that's an option. But the cost of roadwork depends on, the width of the road depends on the, the axles are indeed from your design and also it depends on the thickness of, of that road. So the road we put here in this street is very superior, the layers are different. And because we anticipate traffic to the, there'll be a diversion, you know, instead of going through a dala. So we're doing it, for that we're doing a concrete because we anticipate that road. So it does now really translate to what we discussed in our flexible pavement.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Honorable.
Alright, Honorable Chair, my topic is that, yes, on the shipment, my topic is then I, the issue of road options. And I, we can mention bootman then one of those materials to that of the ABA, right? But I would like to know whether after the shipment, whether we have laboratory that to go and determine, analyze the quality of the bootman. To make sure that we have a very quality road, that we have a warranty time, yeah?
We're now at different levels of testing the, the, the bootman products. Right now, I'm sure LPRC will tell you the standards that they, 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 they're not bringing. But we have a big bit time and we have the hard solid time that comes in. In terms of testing, we have different layers. We require the contractor to test, first of all, the, the supplier to provide a certified copy of the bootman. And they will give us that and then the contractor that is doing the work is also required to bring to us the test result of, of, of the product when it once is used. So we have all that layer before we allow them to do, in fact, sometimes we say do a test location before you actually do the actual work. So a great application of the test, test it on site when it's applied and test it before it's applied, yeah, so yes, we do the testing.
So if I guess, if I'm talking right, you mean Public Works does not have a laboratory to do one?
We do have the, the testing facility to do the analysis when you start. We do have the laboratory facility to do the testing when it's done. That means when this, we do something called query test. So once you apply the product on the road, we go and take a part of it and we test it, we do have that. However, we do not have the capacity to do the test when it's not applied. So when it's still in a liquid form, we don't have that. So we allow the contractor to do that test and certify.
So at that point, at that point, the committee can conclude that that test now is not chemical. It's still the same, it's not chemical.
I, I, I don't understand that.
The test you say you're doing, whenever the, the product is flat, that test you're doing, it's not chemical test. And his question is concerned about the chemical composition of it, being to me you are using.
Okay, when we mostly, we, that product, it only fill about twenty-five percent of the actual composition of the bootman. So we only have a three point four percent.
And what?
It's added, okay? So what I'm saying, once everything is done, our interest is that when everything is put together, the final product we tested. But the roadworks, the hydrocarbon or the bootman, it just four percent of the actual roadwork. So we don't have the capacity to test only the bootman itself, the liquid one. But when everything is added, imagine, remember flexible pavement is a composition of the oil, the bootman itself, the dust, the rock, crush rock, everything.
That mixture on now, it's one of the aspects.
Yes, once it's mixed and it's applied, then we test it for the density, you know, for the load capacity, which is what I see here.
So, so you mean, what I guess, excuse me, what I guess from the average committee is correct? The test you are doing there is not chemical.
We're not doing chemical test.
So, so you say, so it's okay, you okay? So Honorable Messi, I'm sorry.
Yes, so I just wanted to come back to a question.
Okay.
I think the concern of my colleague is that, do you, I want to put a question another way. Do you have an extent that in terms of the compositions of those materials that are supposed to be combined with the other rest of the material that, that, that making up the rest, right? I think that's the question.
Yeah, like, like I mentioned, we test the rock because.
No, come on, we are concerned now here, this committee is very concerned about the hydrocarbon part of it.
The hydro, the, the, the bootman, I think we put bootman at the time of the hydro, it comes with a certificate. The sixty seventy, it comes with a certificate that's already certified by LPRC. And once the contractor buys the product, we request for that certificate.
Honorable Minister, let me, let me come to this one, yeah, because we can't track it in the rock. It's clear, what you guys say is you are still getting our answer. You do not have a laboratory to do that standard there.
I think you mentioned.
Because of that, because of that, you can't say anything to what's standard, only LPRC can say something to what's it. Because according to you, they are the one that need the certificate of quality. That's everything you're talking about, quality C U Q, that is certificate of quality. So that's it, now.
Yeah, that was the question that I wanted to ask.
Okay.
We, we, we do have a specification, we have two types of bootman. We have the sixty seventy, we have the eighteen hundred. The sixty seventy applies to our weather condition. The eighteen hundred is usually for cold weather condition where expansion is most of the time.
Sixty seventy, sixty seventy.
Sixty seventy and eighteen hundred. The sixty seventy is a hard one, the eighteen hundred is, is a soft, yeah. So mostly we use the sixty seventy. We do have a minimum quality requirement for that sixty seventy, it usually comes from Turkey, comes from UAE. Most of it comes from Turkey and UAE, I'm sure you can confirm that. And we have a minimum standard issue meet, so once we receive that certificate that comes from Turkey or comes from UAE, we look at that. If it meets this, and how long since it was produced? If it meets that, based on the certificate that is provided from everywhere, then we are now the contractor.
So, so we get it, so her answer, we can clearly say that her answer, that she wants, that you should be giving it to LPRC. Look out for you, you only do what we call S A C E analysis, we call the certificate of quality is provided, thank you. Honorable, you okay? Alright, so if that's a case, then I will take the last hour shift. You said you came with one of the technicians, right? Because for me, my question to you, tell us something. Again, you got it right, if you can't, the one you can't provide here, get jotted down and provide it, but from this beginning, we need him. Because moving forward, we give you our more map, those are the things we're going to be looking to be protecting the labyrinth, to be protecting the public and protecting the goals that we're doing moving forward. Because I can say for you, as a quality analyst, the way asphalt is being applied here, after says the ceremony, you see routing or you see break through, it's not normal. That system, you're talking about refer to air spin, that's a penetration network of asphalt. Now sixty seventy means the temperature of twenty-five degree, I wish the needle penetrating, it tells the hardener and the softener and it called it with the temperature or the climate, the condition of the country. So some of the question I'll ask, if you can get it here, I will agree ready, then let it go, you said you left behind, you can learn the.
Honorable, let me clarify that, I'm the Deputy Minister for Technical Services, I'm a civil engineer, I'm a transport specialist and I can answer anything when it comes to roadworks.
Thank you, thank you. So here is, here is one of the question I want to ask. How will you achieve a climate resilient road without quality control? According to you, you are not the one to need quality control.
Honorable, in terms of the asphalt itself that I mentioned. We rely on the testing of the product, the free access in the country, the certificates. And we require the contractor to test the product before it's applied. We at the Ministry of Public Works do not have the facility to test it.
That's what I say, that's the reason I asked the question. Because let me tell you something while I was there, before you become a law maker. Four is giving a contract to do our road, four is giving the right to input the asphalt, four is giving the right to qualify. How are we sure that four is standing at the right? And that is the reason why we doing road, in less than a year, it starts something routing, which is not normal. When asphalt of beauty go through the actual process chemical, best factor are showing that you're going to take at least eight years before you face this for the routing. So now, when you call me and ask a question, do you see all that and I appreciate it, but that's what I want. And so, yeah, how do you attempt to achieve it now that you do not have, are you not thinking of creating a new laboratory?
Yes, we are, then, Honorable, even if you test the product that comes in, the design mix of it is a different matter. You can, you can have the best bootman, if it goes to the cement and the design mix is missed, then you will still complain about routing and everything you talked about. So for us, that testing you talk about is important, but what is important to us is the final product, that design mix of the composition of the bootman. Versus how much of the crush rock that goes in, versus how much of the oil that goes in, is more important to us. Because the, the bootman that you said we talked about, it's just twenty-five percent of what makes of the road composition and it's just from that way. So I do agree with what you're talking about, we do supervise it. And I think we're then pushing to have a quality assurance now, right now we're using.
That's right, I'm okay with that. And we, this committee is willing to work with the world that for me, it's necessary. And if you will not have it under the palm of a secretary in the ministry, then immediately you need to bring LPRC and the team when they have a conversation. And trust me, this committee will ensure that happens. But given all that part you explained, I agree. The beauty is, is a hydrocarbon product, but that's a liquid test, that's a burning. While the asphalt, the one we call the product, it's a, it is the mixture now that comes into that. Even at that percentage, you call it, it forms the number of rubber you will use or those you will use from the asphalt. Alright, so that only question, I will tell you, agree with my next question. How are road pavement contract given out?
Without these regulations in terms of contracting, for government works.
So let me, let me come, let it pass, interesting. How are road pavement contract given out in terms of the acquisition, the potition and the management of the asphalt of the beauty? Utilities that they may be able to speak and okay with that.
Well, before, before we go to the, before we even go into the tender process, we do develop a design. And in that design, we have specifications. And so the specifications also inform the design and the contractor is allowed to go by those specifications. So to answer your question is that we develop specifications for depending on the type of roadworks that we want to do.
Perfect, so do you have, as of now, do you have a national specification? And who develop it?
As, when, when you say national specification.
But for each and every, you say the ten sixty seven, digestors, digestors component of the specification that I gave of the beauty may, other qualification of the tonal temperature. So besides that penetration test, you can deal with physical test. When you do physical test, you have to do all of that, all the seven different test. So you might have a specification sheet, in there made that so many way of evil is that you use a specification. Do we have a specification? Do we have a national specification of Major, Major Public Works, Public Works, based on the nation, is a specification for beauty mechanics in our country?
We have international best practices, we have, we have, in Liberia, we use ASH O design. Yeah, and because we're not being able to come up with a, a new method.
So let me tell you, the committee too is looking to work that, that we should, and LPRC to develop. Because everyone, you see all of people, ideas, specification, who have taken part in this, like I said, I can go into the civil one, but I don't know, zero in Liberia. For the environmental, if the environmental part of A, the, in the area part, all the one place to create the road, the durability. So beauty may be a component like share, but has some level of standard. And we think that I'm going to have a full standard, so that when you give a road to a contractor, it's a two hour road, this is spec one. But they might not can accept it.
Amos.
Then another day now, it's a, someone can go here, another company, take a part of it and produce this spec on their own and bring it and submit it to you. So from what you just said, it means that Major Public Works, Public Works do not have a specs for beauty mechanic, correct? Unless you rely on the contractor to provide a national. Now you just called a name of an international standard, you use it. My next question is, what do you think about ISO?
Let me go back, Honorable, in terms of this respect issue. We mentioned that we have two types of this beauty. And one works for permanent condition, it's not our African. Even if we come up with a spec, that's why we're going to use because of our weather condition, the sixty seventy. Please go for ISO meaning what?
ISO seventy two twenty five, that will boil down to the kind of ASP and metal you want to reduce the global spec for the country. Now you said you are using, what the name they are calling the international standard, you using what the name of?
We're using Asho.
Okay, Asho.
This is, uh, is the, is the American design.
I know, well, so now I was asking, because right now, everyone is drifting towards that the cause of the environment, that issue of global warming. That's what I'm asking. Are you people thinking about that or what do you think about going to IS?
Well.
Why is that they say two twenty five?
Yeah, well, the thing, the thing is, I mean, I'm a bit familiar with the second team. Uh, honorable, but, uh, in terms of doing a more resilient and sustainable roads.
Okay.
Uh, there are a lot of things that come into play. It's not only the but to me, there's other things that come into play.
But this committee is no concern with the beauty.
Yeah, so, but I think we can have more discussion.
Okay, so I appreciate that. That's why I was stopping there.
Quality of.
More conversation and they come into making some recommendations. Another question I wanted to ask, I don't know whether I was asking in detail or not. When you gave the contract to maybe company A, are they the one importing the beauty me to you? If you get a road pavement contract of company A, who inputs the beauty for them to use?
Well, based on economic of scale.
Okay.
Um, if the but to me is available in the country, most of them buy because it's bottomless. Uh, again, we have some donor funded projects where we see they're inputting their own but to me.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. Follow all later. I'm okay with that. The next question I wanted to ask, currently you are using P, according to you, that is penetration beauty me. That's why you use sixty seven. Have you had conversation or are you thinking of going to PG, that is a performance grade? Because research has written that responding great beauty me. In terms of, in, uh, in terms of his, uh, accessibility to different temperature or climate condition around the world. It seems, it seems to be scientifically better than the penetration.
Okay, we've done, we've done that analysis and we, we realize that increases the cost of our roadworks.
Yeah, it's very important.
And, and so, um, also is that, um, the use, the use of it also is a different, uh. Uh, requires a different type of skill to be able to do that. So, uh, are we willing, is this house willing? Uh, when we bring our budget, they're saying it's going to cost one to two million per kilometer. Is it, is that a competition we think out, uh, to also increase the, the, the cost of roadworks? So, you know, they're, they're giving better quality than what you were talking to. But again, it's just from within our own, uh, financial space.
Alright, so, so like you said, today is a content in there getting a start of function and maybe say. Okay with what you guys said. While you guys have a conclusion on you. We want to, um, we want to, we want to, we want you to do few things for us. Please provide, please provide to all the list of company or contractor, especially all of the. For instance, that targeting of foreign, a kilometer primary road be done. You that want to rehabilitate four hundred and forty five kilometer primary road. Uh, you want to rehabilitate that, then you want to expand one thousand ninety kilometer secondary road, then you want to develop two thousand five kilometer. Would that interesting that this means of company or contractor that you would hire and the one that you already hired in the lower one. Reason is, you think the committee on the basis of this poor side, don't you need to save the U N?
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of them.
The next thing, I can't even get in, uh, you want to say something before I end? Go on again and I'll conclude.
Yeah, so there's a question.
Yeah.
I think the concern of this committee is, uh, to deal with the Asfa or the hydrocarbon component of road activity.
Yeah.
And the fact that not all of these rules are concerned about usage of Asfa. I think we should limit our requests.
So the question will be a list of company or contractor that are doing Asfa basically, simply are in there.
Yeah, okay, but you know, some of them.
Yeah, then the next thing is we want you to also provide to all the COQ for the past ten month of all of the Asfa that have been entering of you. Certificate of quality, COQ. According to you, you told me that you received it normally. Yeah, no, uh, I'm saying you, you told me in your presentation that you use this certificate of quality. Before getting, so I would want, yeah, no problem. I would want it for the past ten month. All of the beauty me that have been entering the country for the past ten months. The money certificate of quality for all of the. No, I, I don't want.
I know, I broke up here already.
Yeah. And before, yeah, so before you leave, you can give it up. Uh, then the next, the last one I want to take with you, then we turn with you, is we want a list of beauty making products.
He certified them, so.
I'm, I'm aware. So in me, since I'm asking you to give it to me. I come in, I say I'm asking you to give it to me, it's not a problem. We are working with the same government, asking to give it to you, but I want it from you. I repeat myself, I want it from you. We are working with the same government, take your phone, get a call and maybe move it to you. Because you're telling your presentation.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, sorry, but, uh, the thing is, only reasons why we are asked, all of the colleagues who are in the industry to come together. Is for the coordination part.
I'm coming, I'm coming, honorable man, listen. They, they, LPRC going to have their own kind of log here after their presentation. They will go through the four to five different hydrocarbon product being imported. They will get a pretty good, boom, okay, by excuse. The honorable man made in his presentation, trust me, he are not saying in his presentation, I wouldn't have done that. He said in his presentation, before any pavement of Asfa is done, they will see COQ. And based upon that, that's when they maybe are judging. So in me, I'm very, we see, like they're going to make up for it, send it out. So we want, uh, COQ, we want a list of a company doing Asfa pavement, then we also want the input of. Uh, with that said, honorable member, please, co-chair of the committee, hydrocarbon committee, we will say, um. Now that public where I've done the presentation, the questions that we have at the end, asked, answer given. The conclusion we will ask him for few, few things that will come to our later. What is your main pleasure of the committee?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, two things. One, uh. Because, uh, each of these colleagues have got some things, when. Related, I, I would think, uh, yeah, it would be important for the screen, but also. Uh, considering the timing and that we are asking for other materials, that when they have, uh, meaning their presentation. Uh, nothing stops them from the.
Especially public work.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would, I would.
Especially the public, but no care LPRC will, will have to stay. You got something that other than we need to talk about?
No, no care LPRC and the LPRA.
And LPRA will have to stay.
So if you can make me allow me.
Oh, yeah, that's why you're making that motion.
We, 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 uh, a move that, uh, after the presentation has done by the issue of public works. That the minister be discharged, uh, and, uh, perhaps. And, and, and it is noted that information as required by this committee have been requested, uh, be sent to the committee.
But I always pay attention, we had a contemporary, we talk about presentation of document before now. Uh, somebody ended, they now receive it in their letter. So apparently they now go here to your boss, so please take, please take the motion serious.
That, that, uh, the, the presentation has been made honor before Wednesday of next week. Uh, if I can, up to a second.
The motion made by honorable man. How do you think of it? Against, alright. So we have now, so we can take it for honor over, right?
He already has a, they just have a.
Alright. So, uh, honorable, we say, uh, Mr. Public, I want to say thank you for honoring our presentation. Um, like the honorable man said, this committee amongst other committee, they want to do that they are the best. So they're going to do everything that we did our work as per the letter. So you'll be receiving communication to us, um, now that you wait, you have, now that you have been this, you have been to start to leave. I want you to take things because you will not be here. We have said that we're going to be giving our roadmap, our, our work. It's important that I say this to you before you leave. Huh? Alright, so here is what we don't consider. Now you see, our roof fifty, fifty one, fifty two here gave us three meetings. The community power, the community way of work, and the community oversight responsibility. One, we encourage and open path of communication with. The reason we are politician, if you're not telling us something, yes, oh, we're going to say, trust me, we're ready, you can do. But now I'm declared on this, let me say that in detail. I want you to say, why they just calling on? So please open a path of communication with us. So that we know how to use, because mine now as politician, beside the, the pre media and other thing, the public opinion is one of the area we take information from. So in the public, we're moving forward doing anything that has to do with Asfa or beauty. And you can't let us to know, and we yes, we talking, we yeah, uh, other media talking here, and we think we want the information, we'll call you here. So if they mean we'll call you, take that in the way we're doing. So please to curb that, please open a power of communication. And another one, you want to open a power of information, share it. So we want to be part of everything you've been doing so that it enhances the work, the interaction. And also enhances our way of working. We put in, because mine, today we get hearing in one or two, we didn't make it before the corner.
It's a question, it's a question, yeah. Are you, are you to? I think you to me.
Yeah, so we don't want, we don't want to be a community where we not be doing that. Another thing we want you to take note about, we'll be, we'll be having, what we got special arguing with you. Time we come based on the circumstances, we will call you here now for acquaintance again and now for oversight responsibility. But to tell you that it's a big issue, maybe the laws, to see maybe you're breaking the law or what are you doing, what you're not doing. Another one might be investigative hearing. The next thing we'll be doing, it will be review reports and documents on your entity that we just, that we've been relating to hydrocarb. Because we want to be telling that a lot of people are sending us here that we're working for them. We will also summon you, we will also be prepared to summon you based on your action taking or things done on behalf of the labyrinth. Because I would think that would be really in the interest of the people, Asfa hydrocarbon is concerned. We will evaluate your actions, your policies and your decisions. We will monitor and scrutinize. We will question and worry. We will do budget every street in. Now, I understand that there's a bit is preparing to send a budget. In my opinion that if you want to prove relationship, oh, we are seeing it, I'm seeing it for the public to know. In my opinion that whatever budget is submitted to the municipal fund, going in the general budget, where is that? No issue that has to do with Asfa or beauty me, if you sell our car. Because if your budget come here, the committee will say, only, I want to be talking for you, please, on what you give or prior to the general budget. But if you wait, you just give the budget to finance and don't come here on the waste in me, I'm a member of the waste in me, I choose my career, I'm a member of waste in me. So besides the other committee, I'm on waste in me, if that budget come, by the time I waste the chairman asks me, I'm going to tell you, I don't know nothing about that budget. So if you talk, if you come and present, talk on our Christmas, I can't tell you that what you say is correct. So we want you to please see that as a need, that would happen. And we will also be prepared to do oversight visits. Coming in. Talking to me.
No, sir, I know, I just saying we usually deal with our chair, our chairs.
Of public work? Yeah, so now you have been dealing with Austin now, for all the money, the, the civil weapon, the engineering part, they are beginning. If you feel how you be telling, oh, I came for this festival here, we're bringing this ton of beauty me. And the quality will be there, this are the input, inputting it, it will of course, all the other kind of things. Because we don't want to be gossiping. And for us, you can see the kind of energy we're coming with, anything we understand, we will send for you. And we don't want to have too much selling, that's all we talk to get the power on the way we work. With that said, I want to say thanks for coming, thanks for the opportunity for us. And we'll always be appreciative as your people and we'll do the work and thank you very much. We done, right? LPRA, so Mr. Chairman, yeah.
Uh, concerning it, this time, can I suggest? That we, 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 we post not to more than fifteen minutes, the fish of the colleagues.
Will they tell me?
So as to make sure we are in check. And make sure they do, they do eight minutes of presentation. We do seven days of press browsing, the questions, so that we just. At the end of the day, we will be in at full, uh, definitely.
Alright, yeah, thank you. Yeah, so with that said, colleagues, is that in there, different view? If that's the key, then we, then you do. Alright, so LPRA, please follow suit. The mic is not working? Or?
Honorable Chair, a state, uh, committee member, a representative person, who may say, thanks for the opportunity. So based on the plan allocated, based on, um, our, uh. That we presented to you. Uh, name, a new era, stability and opportunity in the oil industry. So we saw briefly on the, uh, creation of the LPRA. It was established as an independent regulator for petroleum industry. We have a clear mandate and that is to foster regulatory environment for investment. We also know that based on this principle that state the entity that certain group cannot be a player. It was based on that, that the LPR was given breath. And, um, the LPRA plays a key role in regulating the sector. On this transparent framework for us to attract credible oil companies to our business. And we conduct with us. We also, um, have direct association as a certification, so it depends on which metal we use in those industries as well. We are responsible for resources, licenses, um, petroleum equipment and the petroleum system as well. So we know that this whole separation of the commercial and regulatory body came about based on the consultancy, um, process that we had. And that was sponsored by a work happening in I M, the US partner state. We also talked about in our report about the separation of these two institutions. The commercial and regulatory functions is actually the industry transparency, accountability and integrity. And now I think where like you are is, we are at another level. That we are seeing these companies coming in because of the level of credibility that we have now. It's also there to help us, um, with public interest and then to save our national interest. So we have, um, nine thematic era that have been presented for you. So I will go through that because of time, you know, I think the question I will answer. But we use all of these templates as regulators. We use the law, the E and P law of twenty fourteen that drives the process. And, um, we have the capacity building program. We are working with, uh, the National Regulatory Commission. We met and discussed soon that we do the mentorship program to the capacity. And we also have to force stakeholders to enhance their, um, skills. And also the technical skills of our, of manpower at the office. Um, we also have actually engaged with, met with, let's see, just to have informed the stakeholders as it relates to the future ownership. And then we are also working on future licensing round. We have prepared, just we just closed up this one, but with the two contracts for total energies in Brazil. We have our strategic, uh, priorities aligning our activities with the national energy policy. And promoting effective governance through our regulatory processes. So we are so grateful to this morning, and we look out to you, our cases for us too, so that we can do all this rights for the African people. Thank you.
Uh, LPRA, we want to say thank you, thank you for the presentation on time. Uh, colleagues, based on the presentation done by LPRA. So it's now. Yeah. More Asfa, so here we are, so we need to.
Alright, uh, LPRA, I think I listened to, uh, my.
Go.
on the foundation of bringing our right to the open What does that mean?
So, uh, we have a group of regulators within the region. And these countries, they're reproducing, we haven't. So we are working along with them, lessons learned. What can we learn so that we don't make the same mistake they made? And that can help us as regulators with the coming in of those companies.
You want to form something, why you forming? You want to form something, you said formation, what are you forming?
So it's the formation of that body.
Okay.
Because we just keep together somebody.
Okay.
Yeah.
What lesson did you learn from the twenty twenty four uh uh lesson you were? You, me, LPRC.
So honorable.
Oh, okay, so let me start then. Because Honorable Gagah offer twenty one year for you.
I will give you all the answers.
No, okay, so we will do this, so without say, Colis, I want to say thank you. Like we say, it's right for us, but even before coming to the year, we're all hanging here. We say since you will be one of the lead in terms of the term of coming the future, we will stop here, but I want to say thank you for coming. Uh, know that a committee is happy for the parents who are here the first time, even though they are not one to thank me. Hope you keep that kind of commitment. Uh, and do not worry your moming go over or go my or one of our, we did the popular way they take it. If that a kid, then we say thank you, want to say thank you for coming and go forward because if you continue that, it will be on our hands, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The NBA will be there because I can tell you that as we stay here, let me say on behalf of the committee, we are not too happy. We, because some of the question I want to ask, like I said, I don't want to go in. The committee got no idea of what brought that letter from the president. And even my, you know, even at the time you are going under the sea, the committees should have been informed. We want to be on the table too, because we are not on the table. Anything of the discourse that when you come will ask you to come, and I don't think that that kind of conversation. You guys know what you're doing, like we said, the power is from the executive inhering the president, but any election ledger is inhering the entire body. So if you are not giving all the floor, you from the one see the day where when they come, I don't, I don't whether that the Navy and Paul Constitution near or oil black or other thing when they call you, you know. We are also the one be on the table to have a, can be listening on behalf of the people. You, you are at the way of the president or maybe you are adding, I say that for all we are at the way of the people. So when they are not getting to us, they they costing the year from people that spoon in other places they take. And when they run with it, to get it out now if you got a problem. So I want to say the way you started, that we were discussing is very good, actually. We look forward now, maybe, uh, like we said, the committee was a bit, you know, off, now we on. We see how you're going to do within the coming days, we will be months or three years. Thank you for coming. So honorable member, I would want to do the, oh, we said we're going to keep on a little bit, right? Say it's just fifty fifty minute presentation.
It has, it has a working in time.
Yes. But I also want to say thank you, thank you about the, about the time. Alright, so yeah, you can please, please, I want to stick around. Uh, LPRRC.
Thank you, honorable chairman, extinguish members of the honorable committee.
LPRC to be the last. If the media weigh a pleasure of the body.
I want to draw a link between.
You can draw it when, when you finish it.
No, 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 what I mean is, there is a, there's a thin line between between local and LPR. I don't want to lose our concentration.
Colis, why does it weigh a pleasure of the body?
I think, I think, yeah.
I think, honorable, see what?
The question I asked and you see.
Eh?
If the question I asked and you see.
Okay.
So if we, if we begin to draw the team that went back to what you see already.
No, I don't think we see it like that. Ah, let it present, didn't it present itself, I beg you. So if that is a.
No, but I understand it's why they does not have a bad of it.
No, I'm cool, I'm cool.
So if that, if that, if that is said, the body agreed that they put in a month, LPRC will be the last.
No, no, no.
Then apparently.
Okay, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable Chairman, extinguish uh members of this honorable committee, my colleagues uh from the other agencies, we're happy to be here and before I start, again, let me just um I said earlier on apologize, uh, there's a mix of information. The honest truth, honorable, is that we always attend to these calls by the honorable legislature, different committees. The unfortunate thing was that the, the entire management team was out of the country when the letter was received. As a matter of fact, my colleagues is not out, as actually supposed to be out. But because of the importance of coming to attend to your call, I had to leave my duty to make sure that we call our trip shop. So again, we apologize and we can rest assured, we will always be there to attend to your calls and respond to the questions that you ask about the way we administer um the affairs of our different entities. Having said that, the Liberian Petroleum Refining Company was created by an act, was um given an exclusive right by an act of the legislature in nineteen eighty nine uh to input, to store, distribute and commercialize petroleum and petroleum related products in the belly week of the Republic of Liberia. Uh, by that I would also uh have the responsibility to issue importation lessons to uh licenses to importers of petroleum products. And the fundamental reason for that is, you know, for many years, almost forty years, LPRRC has not had the capacity to input petroleum product of its own. So based on that, it was a decision by management at the time to give that responsibility or to open up the sector to bring in private players. So it's against that backdrop that over the years, LPRRC has been issuing importation licenses uh to different players to input refined petroleum products. So we test these products to make sure that they meet the specifications established by the Liberian Petroleum Refining Company. Uh, having said that, I want to stop here, uh, because it's basically the focus of our uh statutory responsibilities. We can go into the details of the things that we are doing. Thank you so much, God bless you.
Alright, so I want to say thanks to LPRRC. Uh, honorable Colis, with the presentation uh done by LPRRC, the floor is now usually.
Yeah.
Yeah, honorable.
Okay, so uh before we go into the detail, there are some I feel concerned that I want to ask the I listened to you, you said the LPRC was created by an act.
No, I corrected that. It was uh empowered by an exclusive, by an act that gives exclusive right to the entity to import.
You can, you can please say that one.
I said, in nineteen eighty nine, the national legislature gave LPRC uh the exclusive right by an act of the legislature to input, to store, distribute and commercialize petroleum and petroleum related products in the Republic of Liberia.
Yes, because uh my question is coming from comment exactly within the media that uh somebody, say LPRC are then operating on an article corporation. We are to have an act establishing of LPRC, so I want to.
So the, the article corporation created LPRC in nineteen seventy eight. And in nineteen eighty nine, the legislature decided to give, to uh give that exclusive right to the entity by an act of the legislature. So yes, we do have an article of a corporation that created LPRC and we have the act that gave all that exclusive right to do the things that I am just.
What is the title of that?
The act.
The act granting exclusive rights to Liberian petroleum.
Is that a title?
Yes.
That one?
Yes, the act granting exclusive rights. Thank you.
Oh, oh, yeah, I got it. Yeah, so when, yeah, when you're dead, when it's all over, are you done? If you still on the floor.
Yeah, so my last question would be uh how many companies import it?
Go ahead, Ira, go ahead. Your question is first, go ahead.
So how many companies do we have currently imported petroleum products?
Currently, we have around, um, we have less than about anywhere between fifteen, sixteen companies. There are about six of them that are very active. And I know probably next question would be how many of them are Liberian companies?
How many of them have storage tank?
Okay, so there are two, three companies that have uh storage facilities, three companies.
Okay. Yeah, and before the uh, before, you know, Colis, take this thing, you are about to say something that I really find, let me say. We were here last Friday, sacrifice our constituency basis to sit there and have this engagement that we did not do it here, some of the question that go over who are we serving? So that we don't have to come again for a particular thing that we can do here. So yeah, honorable mayor, your question was in place and I accepted that, the chair of this committee, thank you. Do we have another question?
Yeah, there are a couple of issues.
Yeah, so.
Sorry.
Okay, so.
There are a couple of issues that I want to raise with LPRC. But I'm afraid I've been, I've been tied into, into budgeting of issues. Uh, I just want the envy to note that some of us have not seen serious issue with the fact that we may not know the full details around this entire issue, I don't want it to look like we are defending any individual, it's, it's always a issue. It's not have a boostability as a individual. But some of us have that mission, the process and procedure of in um uh taking away uh storage fees and re-allocate into something else. We discuss that will come to our realistic budget process. Uh, so that again, for your benefit and the benefit of the country, people understand the rationale behind why you're taking the discharge ticket. Because again, for me, the, the conscience where that we, we allocate and you can't be allocated. Having said that, the nearest goal towards the, the hydrocarb issue.
Can, can you?
Well, why you have a? When you have a car.
So that take, that take our, our.
Yeah, so I just want to know and how many types of petroleum?
No, you may, you may.
Remember.
So currently, um, the, what we give importation lessons for include um PMS, the one they call gas, AGO, the diesel, then lubricant. Different kinds, grades of lubricants, the one they use in the car, you know, and so on. Then of course, as they are discussing here, they pay to me for road constructions, uh, etc. Then we also do HFO, they have a few of, the one that is using the different plants to produce, uh, you know, high energy. Uh, so basically, those are the different types, you know, there are a couple of them. Um, we don't want to go into details, but at least those are the things that we issue importation lessons for.
So, honorable, yeah, uh, we better, I thank you, thank you.
I want to know, what standard you use to qualify quality control?
Yeah, what standard you?
So is the, is that the American uh?
A S C M?
The F C S team.
Testing materials.
Yeah, the American standard testing uh method.
Yes.
And that is the standard you use, I mean for long.
So maybe allow my.
Why ever American is brought here?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you, is that the only one you use?
Yeah, the A S C M is all you there, Americans, so they have a testing material.
And I see. Yeah, you are moving forward, we want to have a debate, we should know what you have.
Yeah, A S C M, that's what all of the products we have.
I will go over there by time you start.
Alright, honorable director, I am confused, I'm a bit confused. Because when I listen to the public work, uh, minister, uh, executive minister, uh, he big mention assurance. And then I'm also hearing of quality control. So I would like to know what role that you are involved with, whether you are involved with both or you are just, you know, with one, quality control.
Same, yeah. Bring them to what specifically we're doing in the lab.
So let me just, let me. Because I, I, with quality, what I was looking at, uh, because he big mention from public work that you certify uh setting product by giving green light. So uh, that is like assurance, giving the uh, the go ahead to use setting product. Then we have quality control, so I would like to know, uh, because I'm confused, because everything you discuss here now is about quality control, or let them know about the assurance after the way, how it's like, how you go about it?
So, so from the quality standpoint, the LPRC design the quality specification to say for the product that Liberian can use, this is the quality, these are the different qualities that we establish. So for every time, for example, uh, gas comes in Liberia, it has to first and foremost be tested in our lab to see whether the gas meets our quality specification. Once it does, then we allow it to enter the, to the Liberian market. That's, that's the, that's the work we, that's the work we perform.
Okay.
Can, can I add?
Yes. Yeah, I want to wait.
Let me just know that you.
So, then you got to take the last, then you get the one.
Yeah, I know who engineer him, I think he's policy maker. So I, yeah, that's good, but I, my ask is this, I, we talk about your product, you big mention of petroleum, right? But then I, the B T M, that's another product, and I, public work minister say that you qualify that, right? By giving uh certifying it, right? So I would like to know, yeah.
That's typical quality.
Yeah, quality, so, yeah, so I would like to know how, you know, you got to go about it.
So maybe we need to. So then you give me. I'll try, yeah, I'll be helpful.
Yeah, thank you, uh, the, the public work deputy minister was specific on B T M. And then B T M is what is applicable to road construction. Aside from B T M, the other products are not applicable to road construction, so he was very specific on B T M. Alright, so uh, B T M that is inputed into Liberia by Iris Construction, for example, there's a company that imports B T M. It's called Iris, that party dot company brings in B T M. And sample is taken to the LPRC lab for testing as well. That party dot B T M makes our specification. So what is taken there consistent with A S T M D four, that's the American Society for Testing Materials. One that enters a lab is tested and when it passes the test, then.
That's what I told you, honorable man, you okay with what you.
Thank you.
So honorable, yeah, honorable, you can take this thing.
Okay, thank you, honorable chair, esteemed colleague.
Our esteemed uh guests, I don't want to say what this is. Um, LPRC let the name to fit Liberia Petroleum Refinery.
Eh?
Refining. We used to operate a refinery before. And it was destroyed by the war. So what is your plan towards restoring that? Thank you.
Thank you, honorable. Who taking that? Uh, Andy, don't.
That is, that is part of the, our strategic plan, honorable. Um, it's a whole range of discussion, mobilization of resources and so forth. Currently, we have a modular refinery, but it's not functional, of course, it's partly on. We have been calling conversations with different players that have expressed interest to work with LPRC and other national stakeholders for the establishment of a national refinery. And that conversation is still at the embryonic or the preliminary stages. So the government, through LPRC and other agencies, uh, including the National Investment Commission, we're working together, putting discussions with those players that have expressed interest. We're hoping that the conversation is going to advance to the extent that, to the point where we inform, you know, the public. But the establishment of refinery requires the mobilization of sufficient uh capital. And we're not discussing, you know, twenty, thirty or forty million. That's way, way above, especially when you want to do something that is one more pick up. For example, if you're establishing a forty five thousand bar per day refinery, you have to mobilize sufficient, you know, capital, so it's capital intensive, but we have a plan to definitely.
Follow up.
Yeah, follow up. Okay, um, prior to the war, uh, the facility in Ganta was established. So that the countries in East Liberia can be supplied with our products. That facility still lies in ruin. What plan do you have for that facility as well?
We are currently in discussions, we again, different players, as a matter of fact, this weekend, the whole management team, along with our technicians, were going to the Ganta Oil Terminal to conduct a feasibility study. That feasibility study will inform our next step. There are about two players that have expressed interest to revamp the Ganta Oil Terminal. But that will have to be informed by the outcome of the feasibility studies and what specifically we want to achieve. We want to revamp that, but it's not going to be at the pre-war uh uh status. We want to be able to expand it, you know, the, for example, the storage capacity, we want to increase it, even the length. Uh, the whole host of things we're going to be adding. So on the basis of that, we're going to be conducting a new feasibility study over this, this, this coming weekend. So we have a plan to be able to revamp that, hoping that before the end of our first turn administration, uh, honor His Excellency Joseph Neman Barkas leadership will be.
Thank you, Andy. Colis, we have another question. Sorry, I think I'm not quick enough, right? So LPRC, yeah, I have a few questions that I want to ask. You quoted the act nineteen eighty nine, and I agree with that a lot. Nothing in that act of, nothing in that act gives you right to the product control, so my question, who gives you the right to product control?
Honorable, we uh, we find that LPRC has the exclusive right to bring in petroleum product for the consumption of the uh Liberian public. We have a responsibility to make sure that whatever product is consumed in Liberia is of high quality. Since against that backdrop, we establish quality specification.
We can see it is not against any act of the right, simple, because it is common sense. Because let me tell you what the committee is thinking, and we'll call you to the table, we are thinking about making a law autonomous, by their practice. Because all we look at it, I can see, like you say, if they are giving the right to do what you're doing, but they are out of creative creation of will. So all those things from looking at, and they will be thinking about, that's how the committee is thinking about you. So. The next thing, yeah.
The convention is that we also have the standard.
That's for different.
That's what I'm saying now, so where the analysis is being done, it's not the standard. The standard, like you talking about, it's a one-way measure of commerce, right? We clear, I was with that lab, if I, we didn't want to make that lab to do what it is, when U N T B created it, yeah. So we are the first group of people that led that lab, and made, U N T B to come and build that lab, everything, so my left. So that is a standard lab, LPRC has a own lab, she do quality control. So for the sake of the year, and like I just said from the beginning of the year, some of the question we ask is not for ourselves, it's for the public, for the law. So LPRC is doing quality control. Do you know that up to now, they got up to forty or sixty percent of population don't know that LPRC is doing quality control? They get in LPRC, bring a product, call on the street, they don't know that LPRC is doing quality control. So now that it's in quality control, and they add a, there's where I get to the raise that question, that is a conversation we have with the committee. So you have to prepare to have a, have that committee, that conversation with us. The next question, you left from L R C, that is a Liberian refining company in nineteen seventy. Now you are at LPRC, what are you think if you decide to create a L P C, that go, that go to companies that go, that go to.
You know, it's a whole range of conversation that we have to have, it's a government discussion, so it is not just the executive, of course, it include uh your, you know, uh, require your involvement, your participation as well. So our task is to make sure that as many expertise can come around the table to develop a law that we can fully implement in the separate interest of the nation. Okay, so whatever that be, you know that we already have started drafting uh, at based on some of the concerns that different stakeholders have, and we're hoping that we can work with your committee, give me your expertise.
And you are ready to go beyond.
We can tackle your committee, you know, that's why we.
Yes, thank you.
We're hoping up.
Right, yeah, uh, you, you, you talking about like petroleum company to change from LPRC to L P C.
Yeah.
But my thing is, uh, it means that you are totally getting rid of the downstream function of the petroleum industry.
No.
You should have a downstream function.
So let me kind of.
Because refining is, is the downstream aspect of the.
Yeah, you, yeah, we call the shop, you listen.
Yeah.
If you want to go into the, the technicality now, go that, refining is not in the downstream. Let me be clever now, hold it, refining, refining is not in the. But good thing about it is there's a thin line between the middle and the downstream. And we who sit down the committee can, can make that line clearer or darker. That's what we say with the corporation.
We are looking forward, honorable.
Thank you.
Management is, is hoping up, we're looking forward to collaborating.
That's what we say, after this year, yes, follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you, the next question I want to ask. You say you importing, you are importing lubricants?
No, as LPRC, no, no, no.
Okay, I heard something like that, then my question now would be what plan you have? Because as, as Liberian Petroleum Company is doing quality control, all of our transformer, I can confirm to you as a technician, that some of the problem the transformer have is not, is not just uh electric flow. It is quality of the oil they use in there. The company in Ghana, I can, like I told you, this committee moving forward, you're coming to see the productivity of the committee. Because everywhere there is an issue, I look at my following and all the world will come and work there. Because like you guys said, transformer or car or lubricant, they are all hydrocarbon products. We think at this level, LPRC is starting to have a qualifying there. Do you have such plan, or are you doing it at the moment, are you qualifying lubricants?
Yeah, sure, honorable, we giving, uh, issuing licenses for importation of lubricants. And the good thing is that we've already upgraded, we upgraded our lab to make sure that it meets I S O uh standard. So that's, that's where we, that's where we're going. Uh, just recently, our team from the lab went and, and honor went some crash course training in Codiwa led by the Deputy Managing Director for Operations. So this is what we're doing to make sure that, and the testing parameters have now increased from two, we're increasing it to even more than ten. So yes, uh, we.
So let me call you, so.
We work with you.
Yeah.
And all the other players.
From what I hear, from you, you are less than six or seven, but you are not actually analyzing the market at the moment.
So they, they, they train that with my, my team is honorable, or as honorable, they are packed.
So the committee, they are going to take it like that, and we look forward, uh, Yerry, for you on the progress, but we think as committee, now that we here for the sake of the people, that we still looking for some of our country, maybe.
Thank you, thank you.
So we look forward, Yerry, and look forward.
Thank you.
Uh, my next question. Alright, so let me, let me ask a question, it's too late now, closing, I ask the full while closing. Anyway, uh, you know, and you have people that are asking, because he's your deputy manager, when you are sensitive with operation, or if you think you want to tell anybody, you can do. The main product that come in in gasoline, come in with these, they have come on this, you know, you did not say anything about gasoline, not really gasoline. So like the common use of these fuels, of here, how many tests you do at the moment? How many quality control tests you do at the moment?
Uh, there are different quality control tests for each of the parts.
How many do you?
I, I.
Sorry, or you don't have that one?
Honestly, I can say and take the normal of.
I agree, then the last, yeah, then the last, the follow up question with that, that will lead, follow my other question for the future is of the few tests you can remember, which one of there are fit for purpose and which one of there are fit for consumer protection?
So, 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 let, let me look at for example, you know, one of, one of the tests.
No, let me break it down for the sake of what, why she, when I say fit for purpose, for each day, that local uh test the density. The density rate is from service to service only for gasoline, because that's illegal. But for diesel, it's eight hundred and four, that's fit for, fit for consumer made, for each, you doing fourteen tests. That's, that's cancer process only, so when I ask what the test you doing now for, because. So when I ask what the test you doing now for, because like I said, the committee is going to be proud of it. We will call you one-on-one after this general hearing, want to propose some things, I want to see what you're doing. At any other, we just want to project to reach a level where people in all over the world can still trust our system and use our system to reach a certain level. But if that is the case, I will stop there. Now, let me be recommend, we want to conclude on this for you. Please provide to us the list of current imports that are meant to.
You were asking a question.
Yeah, while I'm here, and the chair now, I decided, because my, you know, one of the reason we decided to go very low on this, you are not here from the beginning. The letter that brought you four years, say come and know, or they know you, and get there where you're doing. The only reason we try to show small color here is because one ten home of death on last Friday. So the next time we call them, I will go there, so please, that's the reason. Now, so please write these things for, or the committee are interested, they please provide all the list of all the inputs, current inputs that you have, that have endless needs. You want to say they will quality for all the petroleum product that have entered the project on January two, nine. We also need a copy of the country's standard specification, the one that you are covering.
The countries from which the products are coming?
We want specification, that spec sheet that you have.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
That's what we want.
Your measure?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it says somewhere is zero point five, certain product, zero point two, certain product percentage. So what give, we want to know what inform that judgment so that they completely want to provide some information. Alright, so look to me things we want them from you. We want to say thanks to LPRC, thanks for honoring our communication, we look forward for our other conversation. To you, money go, what you go, map, and you got it, go.
Yeah, three things.
Eh? Yeah.
One, three things.
Yeah.
We have a.
So wait, 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 do you want to go? What can you?
List of all the importers.
List of the.
Two people generated to work.
So, yeah.
And then the country.
The specification, the standard you use for all of the products you import directly.
Yes.
We want that. So when I, when you got motion, when the motion time, it will be to tell you one you provide there. We will be happy to provide that. Alright, so yeah, we want to say thanks. I just ask a question. Are you familiar now with the roadmap, the whole team want to work together, or you want to go over it one more time? I'm ready for public work, ready for. Okay, so let me go over it. So here's the roadmap. Number one, you say we want you to pick opinions, we want you to have a full big power of competition with us. We think that is important, because if you are communicating the point, maybe just, just you can tell here that this week, and you do, so I can handle solve your work in Ghana. The committee is not aware. Now, the reason why I think in my opinion for politicality's sake, for some of these things I told you all, who sent my, I remember that them, wherever local and program, we don't need to call here, you can explain to us. You laughing, but we serious about it.
I'm serious.
Uh-huh. Now, your envy just said that you want to go to training. Remember the committee, you guys interesting, how the trainings are done? So that we can speak, we can speak to the labor board this thing, so we got interest in making it. So please open a line of communication. Number two, please open a loud information sharing. We don't want to be calling here on the basis of gossip. Number three, be aware that we'll be having both legislative and investigative hearings here. Another thing is we have interest in reviewing of the post and document, when that is the worst way to one of concerns us. The next thing will be somebody you based on action you will be taking that, that might be against, out of the law or just the welfare of the people from which we are here. We evaluate your actions, your policies and decisions. We monitor and scrutinize you. We question and inquire. We do political scrutiny, they saw me giving that sound. Project P R is a push, it's our period that we submit a project fund as a project international project we will have. So when we see no our career, when you can't do different, we can see you get.
But I thought you no one is paying to do the project, you know?
No, they committed our career, they committed, therefore, like you were saying, we keep your passion. If it need, we will make sure to do that, but if it need not, then. We also be doing what we call a oversight business. So we will be writing some data, we want to know this is, please accept that. Thank you very much. Uh, we last said, Noka, we, we, we now turn to you. Noka? Noka? Right now. We appreciate.
I saw LPRC, LPR, yeah.
LPR, oh, it's.
So now, then we had to make up some, uh, 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 do an amendment to the law, or cancel one company and get two more?
Yeah, LPR, LPR.
On the wisdom of the house.
Yeah, in the wisdom of the house.
Um, for honorable Chair and members of this esteemed committee, let me first, you know, apologize, uh, apologize to the committee. I think there was a miss communication. We should have asked, we, you know, last, give attention, I was sent. My understanding from my team is that the address, I would let it was addressed to the former CEO.
Maybe I taught that you, because they know Fabian, Fabian, I work with me, in our P B. So the book is Mrs. Fabian. Yeah, I only did. I only did the book, Mrs. Fabian.
Wonderful misses.
Yeah.
So they have sent it back and I would not aware. But this is important, I will continue to engage. We think it's important that we continue to work together because of the, you know, grown people. Um, for oil gas, it's, it's quite difficult to function without, you know, the legislature and civil society and the media. You know, we have to continue to partner together. We have to continue to work together. And Chairman, I, you know, I appreciate the push that you, you know, you did to take. Um, we think the legislature should be taking along. So that when these petroleum agreements.
Yeah, yeah.
So that when these petroleum agreements come to the legislature, you are already aware of the terms that have been agreed and some of the rationale behind, you know, some of the terms. Um, so we continue to have the discussions, we think it's important, you know, to work together. Um, we are thought we come here for a present, just to have a drink. So this is more formal presentation.
Oh, 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 oh.
But the letter is sequented, so that's why we talk. So I'm apologizing.
No, drinking not mean alcohol.
Not alcohol, no, cheers, just, you know, water. So going to Noka, Noka was founded in two thousand out of the office of the LPRC. So take the LPRC as a mother company. Um, so we give them a respect. The law was amended in twenty thirteen, act fourteen, separating the commercial and the regulatory function. Um, there was sever craft, that Noka was both a national oil company and not a state-owned regulating company that competing with, you know, the sector. Institution was separate. And I gave proof to the, to the LPR. So why LPRC gave proof to Noka, Noka gave proof to LPR. So we're sisters organization. It's difficult to separate these organizations, they function together without one, the other can function. In accordance, it's difficult to separate them. But, you know, one of the, one of the acts, you know, one of this company, this company. Because we're closely function together, just like I was my wife, you know, considered. The tip and the tongue, you know, the areas we disagree areas, you know, we will have a free, it's part of, you know, the working place together. So these three organizations, they work very closely, Noka, um, part of our key function is to represent the state equity in every agreement. So every petroleum agreement, every Noka has a state on behalf of equity state on behalf of the country. We are also responsible for national training and development. So all the training and development, we set up, it's managed by Noka. We have trained it, it all, it can, it has a scale up in the law, as one of the key functions of Noka. Uh, so we work with a different organization, so we train people for sector. Also, we are the, we are the marketing and promotion agency of the government. Our responsibility is to go out there and promote the country have a competition, opportunities to have, what, um, what are the different blocks we have, what are the potential of these companies that are in this sector? When these companies are convinced and they think Liberia is an investment destination for them, then we take these companies, show the LPRA to be licensed, and that's our process. So when they get licensed by the LPRA, then again, we take them along. Because at one point, we are party to the agreement, uh, because of the government equity state, and the agreement here for the competition. So, uh, that's the great deal, that's why data management is a key part of what we do. Uh, because without data, no one is able to decide to come to a cafe. Uh, petroleum companies are not going to, they can't do a well without data. Uh, so the data is managed by, by Noka, but it's regulated by the, the LPR. Um, reconnaissance license also, um, the LPRA is responsible to issue reconnaissance license to companies. And we are responsible to administer that reconnaissance license. Um, lifting and marketing of petroleum products, really event as a discovery, the ownership of petroleum product is managed by, by Noka. So we lift and market that petroleum product, and the revenue was to the, to start of that. So in summary, those are some of the key things that Noka, um, was created to perform. What we're trying to do, um, so we just concluded our strategic plan last, uh, late last year, early this year. And the key areas we want to focus on within the next five years. There are a lot of things we can do as a national oil company, but again, we operate in a political space. We think we have to focus on things we think are achievable, you know, and just start running everywhere. So the first thing we want to do is that we want to increase our data library. Again, and it just starts with data, without data, you can't do that. Currently, uh, we have two D data across our basin, thirty-four thousand kilometers of two D data. We have twenty-four thousand kilometers of three D data across our basins, um.
So, okay, let you then, just shut your point down, then you take it.
Also, it's a, twenty-four thousand kilometers of three D across the basin. And they've all been reprocessed, all the two D data have been reprocessed. Uh, the three D, uh, end of Q one, twenty-six, we do have a whole set of three D data reprocessed across the basin. Uh, but these are all seismic data. And these are all, these are all offshore data, I want to add it. So ultra deep blocks do not currently have three Ds. We want to acquire new three Ds data. The super majors, I mean, that's the playground, they only do three thousand, four thousand, you know, one of that, that's where they play. Currently, we do not have three D data. Without three D, we can't do it. So companies coming in, uh, first thing is, we do not have the data, they, they will need to acquire data, it's very expensive. And we're also losing revenue as a country. So we intend to acquire, um, three D data, ultra deep. We also want to acquire data near shore. So we look at early exploration period from the seventies to nineteen eighty-five, a lot of the drilling was on shelf. A hundred meter, two hundred meter, five hundred meter, what are that? Probably we don't have the data here. So we want to acquire data on the shelf. And the reason we want to do that is that, uh, there are six big companies in the world, we call it super major, right? And we have thirty-three blocks, I mean, I don't think there's thirty-three blocks, and you will get all the data. But we have companies of indigenous companies, indigenous African companies, right? They have the, the, um, the resources to invest, but they can do two hundred million work.